Okay, hello, hello, am I on? There we go, okay. Hello, everyone, can I get everyone's attention? I'd like to call this session of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Could please everyone rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a full house here tonight. Good to see everybody, happy holidays to all. Just to make, let everyone know, listening at home, Town Council meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. Please go to the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link. We will, I do not have any specific intonations this evening, so I'll certainly have a moment of silence for all deceased Bridgewater veterans, family members, and friends. Thank you. All right, I do not have any minutes to approve from previous meetings. Announcements, I do not have anything specific this evening, but we will start with a proclamation. So, we will, if I have members of the BR High School cheer team, if they want to come up to the podium, we'll bring you on up. Oh, there we go, hold back row there, come on forward. Just stand right at the podium for now, girls. All right, so we have a special proclamation for the Bridgewater Rainham High School 2024 Fall Game Day Cheer Team, and it reads as following. Whereas the Bridgewater Rainham High School 2024 Fall Game Day Cheer Team has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to excellence in cheerleading, exemplifying the best qualities of teamwork, dedication, and sportsmanship; and whereas the cheer team tirelessly practiced and perfected their routines showcasing their impressive skills and athleticism by competing at competitions throughout the season; and whereas the cheer team is led by exceptional coaches who provide guidance and encouragement, helping the team achieve their goals and reach their full potential; and whereas the cheer team has brought pride and recognition to Bridgewater Rainham by competing against 21 other competitive teams and winning the Fall 2024 Game Day State Title. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, does hereby proclaim our gratitude and appreciation to the Bridgewater Rainham 2024 Fall Game Day Cheer Team and commend them for their outstanding achievements, hard work, and dedication to excellence in witness hereof this day, 17th day of December 2024. Congratulations, girls.[182.68][182.68][applause] Now, if you come on up, we can get a good view. Counselor Strigles is a former cheerleader as well, so we'll get right in front of the whole council right in front of here, guys. Getting out of those. Just try to face this way and get the, have the phone's taken. Who's the cap? All right. That's nice, too. All right. Go ahead and sit down. Here we go. [inaudible]
Mr. President?
Yes?
Before we move on to Citizens' Open Forum, I wanted to make a motion to take an item out of order.
Okay, what item would that be?
I want to take item E, appointments. I think that the residents prior to Citizens' Open Forum should hear the counselor-at-large candidate speak so that they can provide any feedback prior to us making any decisions tonight.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay. With that, though, we have to approve actually the order to go through that first, so we might have to take legislation for action out of order first to do so. So, do I have a motion then to take legislation for action out of order?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, we will go with legislation for action. Okay. So, first thing up is Order OFY 25-031, appointment to a vacant counselor-at-large seat. This measure was not referred to a committee, we kept this at a council level, and 14 days has elapsed, so we can take action on it this evening. Again, this was brought forward by me to potentially fill the seat left by Counselor Susie Robinson. So I would certainly ask for a motion, yes?
I would make a motion to proceed with the comments from the prospective candidates, but I would motion that the council not entertain appointment to fill that vacancy this evening.
Okay. So, let's go through a voice vote on whether to approve this order first. If it's approved, then obviously we'll go forward with the candidate speaking. If it does not get approved, then we will obviously not need to have the candidate speak.
Pardon, Mr. President?
Ms. Ellenberg.
Yes. The motion as it is, the motion as it is now, I believe, if we take this vote, we're also, we are also voting to not vote tonight, and I think that we should separate the two elements, is what I'm saying.
Well, the first thing we're doing is voting on the order to fill the seat. We have to make that decision first.
Yes.
If we vote to fill the seat, then we'll have, we'll have the candidate speak, and then at that point, we'll decide if we're voting to fill the seat tonight or not.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, so, well, we do have, so you're motioning to not, well, again, I think we'll certainly have to vote either way, so I will actually, let's make an order, I will look for a motion to approve the order, and then a second for discussion, and we can open up discussion on the order, and then we'll vote on the order as is.
The order that's in the...
That we're looking at right now, that's in front of us, the appointment to the vacant council.
I'll make that motion.
All right, second for discussion.
Second.
Second for Ms. Strigles, okay. So, Ms. Strigles, you had the second for discussion, do you want to open up a discussion on the order?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. I am definitely conflicted as to what I would like to do this evening, that is why I really wanted the opportunity to hear the candidate speak, and then hear from residents as well, because this is a counselor-at-large seat, it is not a district seat, so it is someone that should make up the main makeup of our town, and I really wanted to get to know more on how the candidate was on the fly. Any resume can look like any resume, but I really wanted to hear what they had to say before having to decide what to do or what not to do, so.
Thank you. Any other councils for discussion? Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under our administrative code, Article 1, Section 2, there's a great deal, great detail on how to be filled an at-large council vacancy, even stating that the council should fill this vacancy at least 21 days after the vacancy was announced. So if we don't fulfill the council's seat, we are choosing not to follow our town code.
We've, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we have followed the procedure of the town code up to this point. We advertised at our last meeting, we gave 21 days.
But if we choose not to fill it...
That's still the option of the council, the council has that decision whether they want to fill it or not.
I didn't see that in the code. All I saw was, you should be filling it, and how it filled, 18, if there are 18 months or six months, it clearly shows that the intent was that we should fulfill it, if you read the chapter in the administrative code, Article 1.
Right. There was precedent sent a number of years ago when the council did lose their, the president and I was actually on the council at the time, and I took over for the council that left. The council voted at that time to not fill the seat because it was close to the following election.
But we have two councils sitting here, Lindy and Chase, that were voted in, the last councils, they voted, they were voted in to fill a vacancy at first, weren't they not?
Mr. Chase can speak to that, because he did replace me when I stepped down. Mr. Chase?
And Mr. Lindy was too?
Yeah.
You, I can address that, you are correct, counselor, in that both counselors, Lindy and I, at different points, and very early in our tenure on the council, were appointed for a short span of several months to fill a vacancy. However, and I made this clear, I believe, two weeks ago when we first brought this up, we are each district counselors, we were filling a district council seat. What's before us tonight is the consideration as to whether to fill a, an at-large council seat. We currently have sitting here five at-large counselors. There's really nothing to be gained to benefit the citizens of the town by appointing a sixth counselor at this time, given that within a matter of weeks nomination papers will be available for the April town election, at which that seat will anyway have to appear on the ballot. Now, in the case of a district counselor, I think it's arguably the case that a district seat should be filled because the residents of each of our three districts do have the need for a specific representation by a counselor in each of their, in their respective district. We have five at-large counselors, six doesn't really make a lot of sense, frankly, you know, for us to do it, it's a matter for the voters. And I'll go on to say one further thing about that, and that is that, you know, we serve at the pleasure of the citizens, we were a vote, we were voted into these seats for the purpose of making policy decisions on their behalf. Part of those decisions, it was not anticipated that we would be choosing to fill any vacancies with people who just happen to be like-minded, people who we know and we believe are following, you know, the same procedures or the same policy, I should say, that we like. So we shouldn't be stacking the council with people that we vote for, it's really for the citizens to vote for in April.
Can I respond?
Ms. McGrath and Mr. Lindy.
The, our, our town code talks about how to fill a vacancy for council-at-large. I feel I'm just as important, I represent your district too, as a council-at-large, and besides, we can have a four-to-four, and that's a tie. So the residents want a nine council, they voted for that, so whether it's for two or three months, and no one's stock, stacking anything, we have, each candidate's going to speak and we'll be voting on it.
If we select the candidate...
If there's someone up there...
Against, don't go in back and forth, please, but finish your statement, Ms. McGrath.
I think it's important that we follow the town code, it specifically says council-at-large, therefore, we should fill the seat.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Agreed.
Ms. Lindy?
So, I agree with Counselor McGrath, because even though I was a district counselor that got appointed to fill a seat, I absolutely feel that it's, the town code should be followed, the town charter should be followed. We've talked about this before in other meetings, and you can't follow it sometimes and not follow it other times. I think the citizens of Bridgewater deserve a nine-member council, so there is not a four-four tie, which means it fails every time, and I think we should listen to what the people that put their names forward before us. I don't personally think it's stacking anybody, I'm listening to everybody's, what they're going to say, and we'll take a vote.
All right, any other counselors, before I go back?
Do you want me to fill in on the historical context of that? Because I've been here...
That would be fine, yeah, Ms. Rollins.
I've been here through all of those.
Sure, okay, please, go ahead, Ms. Rollins.
So, the, as it really, it's under the town charter, actually, and it's 2-5, and it's Section C. So Section C relates to the filling of the vacancies by the town council, and that section is triggered by the amount of time that the counselor that resigned was in or had left on their term. Historically speaking, in the precedent that was set, the language that says the vacancy shall be filled by the remaining members of the town council, was that it allows the council to fill that vacancy, should they choose to fill that vacancy. So ultimately, it's up to you all, under the charter, whether or not you fill the vacancy. So you're, I don't think there's anything improper about deciding you're not going to fill the vacancy, I think the charter gives you the ability to make that decision. Yeah, so, so the language is, the vacancy shall be filled by the remaining members of the town council. It doesn't say that you have to fill the vacancy, it says, if you're going to fill the vacancy, in other words, it's up to you all to fill it, it's up to you all to decide if you fill it. And that, that precedent has been set many times before this body, and that protocol has been followed many times before this body.
Mr. President?
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes, I would like to hear from the candidates first, which I think our townspeople would like to hear from.
Ms. Ellenberg, we're just, hold on, just before you go on, we're just deciding on the order first, we're not hearing from any candidates until we decide on the order.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to hear from the candidates first, and then I would like to hear from the audience who is here as to what they think about various candidates, if they are bold enough to speak up to that effect.
I understand, so if we approve the order, then we'll go through that procedure, but right now, we're, we're still on the order?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. McKinnon?
If we were to continue this, would we be able to listen to the people speak tonight?
If we are to... So again, we're voting on the order to fill the seats.
Set of shutting it down.
So if we vote to approve the order, then we'll go forward with the speakers, and we'll also have Citizens' Open Forum where citizens can make comments. If we do not approve the order, then again, we're choosing as a council not to fill the seat at this time, we would not go through with hearing the, the, the people that are here tonight. Any other discussion on the order?
Yes, because we would be doing a double negative...
Double negative?
To not fill the order, and I want to fill the order, so that would be a no to a not fill the order.
But what I did originally was, I asked for a vote to approve and discussion, so when we get to a vote, it'll be a vote to approve. Yes would be to approve the order, and no would be against the order.
Thank you for your clarity.
Thank you. And the other discussion. I'll simply just close by stating that, again, this was certainly brought forward by me, because I did want to have the procedure in place to fill the seat. As I mentioned before, there was precedent where this council did not fill the seat. We are four months away from an election, and again, as Mr. Chase did point out, it is an at-large seat, this is the first time an at-large seat has been, you know, up for an appointment, because before it was precinct seats, so I do think it's important that precincts have coverage, and that's why I think we definitely filled them in the past. Seeing that this is an at-large seat, I'm toward, I'm personally leaning toward Mr. Chase's opinion, that we might be better served waiting until the election to fill the seat, because it is an at-large position, many people have opinions on who they like to see, and I would be very happy to see all the people here tonight put their name on a ballot for that next election. But again, it is a council decision, so we're going to go forward and have a vote, which way we want to go. If we do approve the order, then again, we will move forward with the, when we get to appointments, we'll have the candidates come up and speak, and then we'll entertain how we'll vote on them after the fact. Mr. McKinnon?
Quick question, so if we do approve it, are we making appointments today? Because like Sonia said, I do think it would be good for the citizens to be able to watch us at home that didn't show up and send us emails if it does get approved.
Well, again, ultimately, guys, this is, it is a council appointment, it's not really a public appointment. If they, if we, if you feel strongly that the public should be involved, we might want to wait until an election. But this is a council appointment, so it's really a decision of the council at this point in time, who we want to elect. You've had the information since the 10th, you've had all their, their background information to review, we're going to hear from the candidates tonight, but in the end, it's still a council decision. Ms. Lindy?
I'd also like to point out that if anybody does get appointed tonight, they can choose or not to choose to run, they don't have to necessarily run for the remaining vacancy that they just filled, because they are on the ballot, if I'm correct, in April as well, and they could run for the remainder of Ms. Robinson's term, or they could run for...
So the appointment would be between now and the election.
Right.
All right, if they do choose to put their name on the ballot, they still have to go through the same process, they're not listed as an incumbent, because they're not an incumbent.
Right.
They would be a first-time elect, you know, electee to the position.
But they don't have to run for that position, they can run for any position as a council.
They don't, well, again, anyway, it's an at-large position, there's two other at-large seats up, including Ms. Robinson's, and then the precinct seat that I believe is up as well. Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't see in our charter anywhere it said, if we choose not to. Everything I read about this was saying that this is how we should do it, and we should fill it, and therefore, I think we should, and it's not about who we like. We've heard from residents, we've looked at resumes, and I think we're all intelligent enough to base on what the residents want and what's best for the town, not favors for someone, or stacking it, whatever that, that is talking about.
Yeah, I don't think that's, that's...
I think we should listen to them, and I think we should, you know, we, and we're going to have a tie, what happens if we have a tie? So we're going to continue, I think that's why the intent was, that we always have nine.
I understand, that's, that's the way the council's set up, like I say, it's only four months to the next election, so it's not like we have...
What can happen in four months, where we have to vote?
Well, I understand, what I'm saying is, an election is available in four months if we choose not to. Again, the precedent was sent before in prior councils not to fill the seat based on the timing of an election.
Plus, if you look at the other side of the coin, it's only four months if you think we're stacking it, and then someone's going to be running for that seat.
No, I understand what you're saying, this is, like I said, this is why it's a decision of the council, so we're going to have a vote on it, and if the council wants to fill the seat as a council, then that's the position, that's what we're going to go forward and do.
I hate to see us not follow the, the town code.
The town, the town code, as Counselor Rollins said...
Said if, if is not in the town.
Shall, the council shall.
What I said was, it's, it's in the charter, it's not in the code, it's in the charter.
In the charter.
Two, two dash...
It's in the town code, right?
It is, 2-5, Section C.
Right.
It's, that's the section. It says, the vacancy shall be filled by the remaining members of the town council.
Pardon me?
So, that, can I just finish answering her question?
Of course.
So, the interpretation of that, and the historical precedent of that, is what it's saying, is that you all decide if you're going to do it or not do it, that's how you're determining if the remaining seat is going to be filled or not filled. It isn't that you must fill the seat, it isn't that you have to fill the seat, it doesn't say that, that's not the language. And so, that's always been a gray area, that this, this debate has happened ten times. The charter's never been amended to clean it up, though I wish it would be. So the, the precedent has always been that the language of the vacancy shall be filled means who fills that seat is you all.
I think I took it more literally, because it says you have 21 days.
That's, that's actually, yeah.
They shall in 21 days.
That's actually not the charter, so that's an ordinance...
That's in the administrative code.
Yeah, that's an ordinance, that's in the administrative code, that basically was lending, I don't like how it's actually placed into the admin code, it's placed in like it's in the charter, that is not part of the charter.
No.
That's in, that's an ordinance, and the intent of that ordinance, if you go back and look when it was passed, a very long time, maybe 10 years ago, the intent of that was, if the council decides to move forward with filling the seat, then that's the process to follow.
Yeah, I think the language always...
Hold a second.
Me, I interpreted, shall, you do this, it didn't give an option not.
Right, yeah, and, and the, and the shall here, doesn't mean shall, like you must fill, it means if there's a decision on how it's going to be filled, it's filled by you all. Yeah, well, there isn't an if, no, the vacancy shall be filled by the council, which is what you're doing right now.
Right.
Right, you're deciding how, if at all, you're going to fill it.
Ms. Ellenberg?
I just want to point out, the legal meaning of the word shall makes it mandatory.
That's also not accurate, but in addition...
Sorry, it is accurate, Mr. Attorney.
Well, it, it isn't accurate, and there, there's case law on that, but in, in...
And I will show you case law too, but let us not descend.
Ellenberg, please, we're not going back and forth. Let's listen to our town attorney, please.
Yeah, I've given my advice.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rollins.
Can I call the question and ask for a roll call vote, please?
That's fine, I'm going to ask for that as well.
Second.
Any further comments on the order? Therefore, I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
This is on the order, correct?
This is on the order, please, thank you.
To go forward with the order?
To go...
So yes is to go forward with?
Yes, a yes would be to approve the order, to appoint a counselor, a no vote would be not to.
Thank you.
Counselor McGrath?
Yes.
Counselor Strigles?
Because I want to hear the candidates, yes.
Counselor Chase?
No.
Counselor Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
No.
Counselor Murphy?
No.
Counselor Ellenberg?
Yes.
And Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Five to four.
Five to four.
Five, three, five, three.
Five, three, sorry.
All right.
I miss her. Well, I miss her!
All right.
Sorry.
That means that the council will go forward and, and go forward with what the agenda is set for the appointments, but we do have to finish legislation for action. So, next, Resolution RFY 25-004, Town Council Meeting Dates for 2025, again, submitted by myself, this certainly just lays out all of the, the council date meetings for next year. This is basically ready to be actioned upon, so do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And second, second, thank you.
Question?
Go ahead.
If we find there's any kind of a conflict, we can amend this, correct, later on in the calendar?
Well, it's set, but then if we have to make a change...
Yeah, you, you could, you could amend it by a motion, saying this is an amendment to the date, that's fine.
Just making sure.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And thirdly, we have ordinance DFY 25-009, Veterans Volunteer Services Program, Warcraft Program. This was sent to Rules and Procedures, and I do believe some comments and feedback was given by Rules and Procedures, so I'll ask Mr. Chase if you would like to comment on what you guys reviewed.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and Rules and Procedures Committee of the Council met on two recent occasions to consider this proposed ordinance, and we did approve the ordinance with edits by a final vote of three to zero. So this ordinance would establish a, under, under state law, under Chapter 59, Section 5, and the ability of a veteran in the town to secure a credit, sometimes considered an abatement, on a portion of his or her real estate taxes due to the town of Bridgewater, applicable to their domicile, to their primary residence. And the, the state statute provides for a maximum credit in the amount of $1,500 per year, and the committee did endorse that amount of $1,500. We did spend quite a deal of time discussing a number of matters as to situations in which we might consider limiting the availability, or, well, I will say, the availability of the ordinance to provide for a veteran to secure that type of abatement. One I've already referred to, which is the fact that the committee found it important to restrict the availability of this credit to the primary residence, the legal domicile of the veteran in the town of Bridgewater. And for example, another limitation we had approved was to, was to not permit a veteran who is also over the age of 70 years of age to secure both the veterans' credit and the credit under a different section of Massachusetts law and Bridgewater law that provides for a, a credit to elderly taxpayers in Bridgewater. But we did proceed with approval of the credit, and I'm hoping the council will endorse it. The counselors have all been given a complete copy of the edits that we had made to the ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chase, any, actually, first, let me get a, a motion to approve and a second for further discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended, second.
Thank you, and a second, thank you. Questions? Any other council questions on this? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of the amended version of this ordinance being referred to advertising, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Is, are we going to hear from the candidates first, and then the citizens?
So, going back to what we did, we took legislation for action out of order, prior to that, there was a motion to take appointments out of order, so if we do want to hear from candidates first, we would probably want to... candidates first, we would probably wanna take appointments out of order and then do citizens' open forum after that.
So, my question is, that one is gonna take a while, because we have to hear from each candidate. I'm wondering if it's possible to take the other three appointments and vote on them and then.
We have to take the whole item as, as a whole.
I, I understand that. I'm just asking if we can do B, C, and D, and I do have a question as to what annual term means. I've never seen that before.
Annual.
I've always seen dates.
We'll get clarification when we get to that. Uh, so, hold on a second. So, Mr. Owens, so we did have a prior, last, Ms. Strigles, if you want to maintain your motion of taking appointments out of order?
I think the issue, I think the issue that you're gonna have procedurally is, on the appointments, that's when you have to, to vote the appointment. So, if you take it out of order, I don't know, you're.
Right.
You're gonna have to.
Yeah.
Right? You're, you're vote, you're voting.
The goal, the goal.
You would probably, if you wanna hear citizens' comments, you would wanna hear those first.
Right.
And then you would, then you would vote the appointments. The, the problem is, you have no mechanism to basically make the appointment after you close the appointment section of your.
Right.
Meeting, right?
Right. No, again.
Mr. President?
So, again, our, our situation is under appointments, and again, as we were going to probably vote on a, a candidate this evening, certainly.
You could, you could conceivably.
Bifurcate?
Suspend the rules, and i-if this is what you wish, you could suspend the rules, hear the candidates, suspend the rules to hear citizens' comments directly thereafter, make your appointment, so you're still within appointments, and then finish your appointments as well.
Mr. President?
It's getting, that's getting very convoluted, but.
Yes. So, just suspending the rules to hear the candidates, then go to citizens' open forum, then go back to.
Yeah, so after, after.
Got suspended twice.
After you hear, after you hear the candidates, 'cause you're, you're, you're on appointments now, right?
Actually, citizens' open forum would be next.
Okay, so then you're gonna have to, you would have to move up, vote to move up appointments.
Yeah.
You would hear the candidates after they all finished.
Yeah.
You would vote to suspend the rules.
Correct.
In order to have citizens' comments at that time, but you wouldn't leave the idea of appointments, you would continue thereafter.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, it takes citizens' open forum within.
Yeah.
Appointments.
I, I don't think it's the best way to have done this. I think maybe we should've built something into that agenda in that way, but I, I hear what you guys are trying to do, and I think that's the best mechanism.
And I so move.
And, and. Let's go ahead.
And then I'm asking, because that is all gonna be at least half an hour, hour, 45 minutes, I was asking if we could take planning board and the two appointments out of order, just to get that done.
Oh, yeah, you, you can take them out of order under the, if you're moving appointments up, you can take appointment B, C, and D out of order.
Okay.
Okay.
Hundred percent, you can.
Okay, so I'm ask, I'm making that motion to take B, C, and D out of order.
Well, you gotta first.
All right, let's go with the taking appointments out of order first.
You gotta first take the appointments out of order.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Strigles, you still want to make a motion to take appointments out of order? Do I have a second on that?
And I second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. So, we are at appointments, and you would like to take a motion.
And then I'll make a motion to take B, Planning Board, C, Republican Town Committee Appointment, D, Democratic Town Committee Appointment, out of order.
All right. And do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellenberg. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we will move to appointments.
And just quick, quick clarification on B. What does annual term mean?
Uh.
So, for the planning board?
I'll go to the town manager or anyone the town manager points.
The member would be an associate member, so that's up for reappointment every year.
Based on being an associate member, it's an associate.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, so, we have Eric Costa. You have his information in your, in your paperwork, council members. This is for an annual term as an associate member of the planning board. Do I have a motion for approval?
So, move, second.
Second.
And second, Ms. Strigles, and third and fourth, thank you. Any discussion on the, on the applicant? Seeing none. All those in favor approving Mr. Costa for the position of the planning board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Costa for.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I do have a question. It says Republican Town Committee Appointment, Democratic Town Committee Appointment. It's really the appointment to the Board of Registars, so I just think that should be noted someplace.
Okay.
Because when I first looked at it, I'm like, what does that mean? But then, when I looked at the, the information, it says Board of Registars.
For both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Does anyone have that clarification? Okay, very good. So, next up, we do have Suzanne Lincoln for the Board of Registration, Republican Town Committee Appointment for 2024 to 2026. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Ms. Strigles, second by Ms. Ellenberg. Any further discussion on the candidate?
Discussion, Mr. President, I would like to hear from the candidate briefly. We're talking about the Board of Registars, which is a very important position having to do with election integrity and all those kinds of things. And so, I'd just like to hear from the Republican and the Democrat, if that's okay, if they could each.
If they're here, is Suzanne Lincoln here? Suzanne here?
Oh, oh.
Uh, yeah. Please.
So.
Just suspend the rules. Come up to the podium, please.
The Board of Registars chooses someone from the Republican Committee and someone from the Democratic Committee.
Okay.
So Suzanne is fulfilling the end of Johnson's, that's why it's only two years.
Debbie Johnson, okay, okay, my mistake.
So, these were chosen by those committees.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, so we'll go forward, then we don't necessarily need to hear from the candidate. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of appointing Suzanne Lincoln, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you to Suzanne. And for the Democratic Town Committee Appointment of Board of Registars.
I'll make that motion to appoint Derek Bennett to the Board of Registars.
I would second.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy, second by Mr. Chase, thank you. Any further discussion on the candidate? Seeing none, all those in favor of appointment of Derek Bennett, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you to Mr. Bennett. All right, now, we'll go back to the top of the order here, under appointments. So, we have five candidates tonight for the, for the open seat. I will go in order as listed. I'll ask the first candidate, Scott Pitta, to come on up and introduce himself. And similar to, with citizens' open forum, we'll try and keep the comments to three minutes or less. Please identify yourself and your address as well.
Mr. President, can I just ask a question? Can we give him five? Because this is an important position. I think three is.
Well, do the best we can, so.
I prepared for three, I don't know if I'll get it to three, but I'll, I'll see what I can do.
Okay.
You know, I'll.
We'll keep everyone within the same area. Let's see how it goes. So, as I said, I'm Scott Pitta. I am almost a lifelong resident of Bridgewater. Took a few years off of the military, left, came back, because after seeing the rest of the world, I realized this is really the best place to be. Currently, I work as general counsel for the Office of the Veteran Advocate for the State of Massachusetts, working with administrative governmental law, a lot of the questions you were just talking about.
Your mic might not be on.
Oh, mic.
The mic.
The mic is off.
Closer.
Oh, there we go.
I see no light, though.
There's never any light.
All right, I'll speak up. How about that? No, it, it's fine, I can be loud.
And just for the people at home, though.
True, true, okay. There we go. So, as I said, I am currently general counsel at the Office of the Veteran Advocate for the State of Massachusetts, and we advocate for all of the veterans across the state looking inward at the government and finding areas where the government is not meeting its obligation. Prior to coming to work for the state, I worked legal aid, representing low-income and homeless individuals across the state. I had the honor in 2011 of being a founding member of this town council. I served as the first vice president and the second president of this council. During that time, the town of Bridgewater went from roughly three-quarters of a million dollars in debt to a surplus of 2.2 million. I can't take credit for, for that, that was a team effort, as you all know, but it was good quality fiscal measures and keeping an eye on everything that came out in budget proposals and what was being spent, making sure that we could actually afford what we were doing. More recently, I also served on the Town Charter Review Committee, going through the charter line by line, recommending changes, trying to update the charter, finding areas where things just didn't work, because we didn't get it right the first time. So, yes, we need to update the charter. I think it's confusing the way it is in, in the code right now. The charter needs to be separate. It is the constitution of the town, and sticking it in the administrative code makes it seem like the charter is just another ordinance. No, no, no. That is the pinnacle of the town of Bridgewater's legislation, and everything else has to follow that. But that's my opinion. You just had a pretty lengthy debate over whether you should fill this empty seat, and now you have to decide who you're going to fill it with. That's gonna be tough. As you all know, this has a very sharp learning curve. There are a lot of procedures, there's a lot of, you know, technicalities with this job, there's terminology that can be foreign. So, I contend, you need somebody with experience. No, admittedly, I have experience, so yes, you know, that, my opinion is a bit self-serving there. But it does take time to learn this, and this position only goes through the election and then until the new council members get seated. I was supposed to come up here and talk for three minutes about why you should select me, but I'm gonna take my time and talk about why you should not. If you're looking for someone who you think is going to vote the way that you vote, you will be deeply disappointed in me. My personal views on politics are far too nuanced to fit into one side or the other. So, don't look for me to be the one to break a four-four tie every single time with you in lockstep. I guarantee you, I will disagree with each and every one of you at some point, as I add to the debate, because I firmly believe that as we debate these issues, from the perspective of understanding the, the opposing argument, not as if they are enemies, but they are someone to learn from and gain a new perspective. If your desire is to have someone who comes up and does exactly that, then I believe I am the person to fill this position. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pitta. Next up, we have David Michael.
Good evening, council members, Bridgewater residents and neighbors. My name is David Michael, and I am honored to stand before you tonight to express my interest in the vacant town councilor seat. While my family and I have proudly called Bridgewater home for the past four and a half years, my connection to this community runs much deeper. My in-laws have lived here for over 50 years, and through them, I've built a strong bond with this town and its traditions, making Bridgewater feel like home long before I officially moved here. Professionally, I bring a well-rounded background that I believe positions me as a strong candidate to serve you effectively. Before becoming a full-time Realtor, I spent 20 years as a regional executive in the beauty industry, where I developed essential skills in relationship building, strategic retail partnerships, and the education and training of employees and partners. Over the past eight years, I've dedicated myself to helping local families achieve their real estate goals with my brokerage being Jack Conway, who, as you know, has been a fixture here in town for a very long time. Being a full-time real estate advisor has taught me how to remain calm under pressure, focus on details, and provide steady guidance during what is often one of the most stressful experiences of my clients' lives. Beyond my professional background, I am an engaged and invested member of our community. I volunteer for local organizations, attending forums and small business workshops on Bridgewater's vision-to-reality revitalization goals. I participate in events like the July Fourth Parade, and I volunteer monthly at our very own senior center. I believe that being present, listening, and taking part in the work that builds up our town is vital. As a town councilor, I would bring a calm, focused, and common-sense approach to decision-making. I strive to be approachable and reliable, someone people can turn to with their concerns and ideas. I will listen to the needs of our residents and take thoughtful, appropriate actions to support them. To the current town councilors, thank you for your work that you do every day for Bridgewater. And to the residents, thank you for your support and your engagement, and for allowing me the opportunity to share a bit about myself tonight. I am eager to contribute to this community that means so much to my family and me, and I hope to earn your trust as a dedicated advocate for Bridgewater's continued growth and success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. Next up, we'll have Johnny LaRette.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the town council. My name is Johnny LaRette. I live at 300 Black Mallard Road with my wonderful and supportive wife, Lauren, who's pregnant with our first child, and we couldn't be more excited than to usher a daughter into this world and raise her here in, in Bridgewater. Together with Lauren, we own Back Bay Fit, a thriving small business focused on the health and well-being of our clients and our community. I have the privilege of working with incredible trainers, coaches, physical therapists, and chiropractors, even not as great as Dr. Perry. We all have and share the, the same mission of bettering our clients and our community's lives through improving their health. Before transitioning to business ownership, I worked as a civil engineer in New York and here in Massachusetts, where I gained a lot of hands-on experience with road improvement projects and water management systems, which I think would be vital to our community here. Additionally, I currently serve on the Board of Directors for a real estate corporation in New York, where we specialize in multifamily housing and commercial real estate. Simon Sinek speaks of Finding Your Why, if you haven't read it, it's a, it's a great book, discusses the importance of finding the passion that, that drives you. And my why is very simple. I believe in the full potential of other people. I strive to help others elevate themselves to their full potential, so they could live more fulfilled lives, and that energy can permeate throughout the rest of the world. This belief has guided me as a coach, and this is the driving factor behind my candidacy here tonight. I believe in the full potential of Bridgewater, its residents, its businesses, and its institutions. I'm particularly interested in investing in education supporting our schools. I believe that every great society stands on the shoulders of its children. I would love to do everything that we can to work with the school board, to empower them to do everything that they do, that they need to, to do their jobs properly. I would love to bring my expertise in engineering to modernizing our infrastructure, particularly improving water quality, and doing everything I can to decrease PFAS contaminants, which is a personal concern, concern of mine, and improve the quality of our water. Finally, I'm very interested in economic development and do everything I can to support small business in our thriving community here. Bridgewater is one of the oldest towns here in America. It has incredible New England charm, and I believe it's our duty to preserve that while also ushering us forward into economic development and continue to thrive as a, as a community. I see this as an appointment, it's not only an opportunity to serve in the short term, but to simply get, get started at work early. I'm gonna be running for the open position in April, and I'd just like to get up there and get started a few months, a few months earlier with all of you. Thank you for your consideration of my candidacy, and thank you for everything that you do for our community. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. LaRette. Next up, I have Michael Sylvia.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Sylvia, and I'm excited to speak with all of you tonight as a candidate for councilor-at-large for the town of Bridgewater. I'm applying because I believe my experience, skills, and commitment to community make me a strong candidate to help Bridgewater grow responsively and inclusively. Bridgewater, whether we like it or not, is a town on the move. Our growth represents both opportunities and challenges as we shape the future of our community. As we make decisions about economic development, walkability, connectivity, we need to focus on creating a town that works for everyone, residents, small business, businesses, students, and visitors. residents, small businesses, students, and visitors alike. Enhancing connections between our neighborhoods, the university, and small businesses is one of the greatest opportunities that we have. By improving walkability and smartly balancing growth, we can create a vibrant, accessible town while ensuring taxpayers aren't overburdened. Supporting small businesses also strengthens our local economy. We all know that. Keeping more resident dollars in Bridgewater benefits the businesses and makes our own town unique and creates a cyclical growth that serves everybody. Bridgewater's population is changing. More people are moving here. The cost of living is rising. It has risen. And residential property values have increased to match demand. These shifts impact everybody because they are especially challenging to our senior citizens. We need to ensure Bridgewater remains affordable and welcoming for all while preserving the character and sense of community that make it special. As a small business owner in town, I've spent my career working with local organizations to achieve their goals. Whether it's partnering with a local land trust, supporting a domestic violence shelter in Jamaica Plain, or assisting a home and school for children in Boston, my work is rooted in building community. This is not just a passion. This is my life's work. My professional background in design helps me drill down to the heart of an issue with anybody to find practical solutions. I believe that listening to each other's perspectives and collaborating leads to better decisions for everybody in town and in the room. I've also served on the Open Space Committee, where I've seen how preserving what makes Bridgewater unique must go hand-in-hand with planning for growth. My eight years working at a nonprofit and in that sector has taught me the importance of acting locally while also thinking globally. This is a unique opportunity to serve the town in a temporary capacity for the next few months. If chosen, I will work diligently to represent the community during this time. I apply because I believe we can grow Bridgewater in a way that strengthens our economy, preserves our character, and ensures that no one is left behind. And I'm committed to working hard for all residents, lifelong, new, and future, to make our town a place where we can continue to be proud to call home. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your support. Together, let's continue to build Bridgewater that works for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia.
Thank you.
And finally, Michael McDonald.
I don't think he's here.
Was he? Was... Not here? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to go to Citizens Comment.
Second. And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, so we'll now bring Citizens Forum up. And to reiterate, due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment period. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the Town Manager at a future Town Council meeting. So please, if you'd like to come up and speak, please state your name and address for the record, and we have three minutes.
Tina.
Tina, please come on up.
Do you only want comments about candidates?
No, no. It's open forum.
Oh, awesome. That's why I'm here. Okay, I am up here to talk about an ordinance you guys are going to be getting to later, I'm proposing, with the support of Dr. Perry, that we, for the local-only Saturday spring break election, shorten the polling hours from 10 to 8 instead of 7 to 8. The state now wants us to do mail-in voting for every election, which includes the local elections, but they do not reimburse us. So the postage for mailing those ballots is the town's responsibility. So because we have to do the vote by mail, the money savings of those three hours that we shortened is about $2,300. If we can get $2,300 ballots mailed out and returned, that's more than we've ever had for turnout for a local election. So I'm advocating that all my candidates take this little QR code with them when they get signatures and when they're campaigning. It is an app directly to the state's vote-by-mail application. So you will fill this out and get your ballot mailed to you. The April vacation is almost always break. So parents have got to get absentee ballots, or they have to figure out a way to vote before the election. The turnout for local elections is about 5%. With the vote by mail for this first time this year, it was 13%. So it costs about $1 a ballot. So I would like to see that $2,300 that we're saving by shortening the hours do that. Also, Rainham does 10 to 8. We have to mirror their... We have to have the election the same day they do. I would like to mirror what they do, which is 10 to 8. And interestingly enough, in Rainham, if it's uncontested, it's 10 to 3. So that really does save in the long run. And there was a poll that I put on the town website. Does anybody want to know the results of that? Did anybody do the poll? So about 58% were in favor of shortening 10 to 8, and 61% were in favor of shortening from 10 to 3. So hopefully, this amendment, you guys will move it to Rules and Procedures, and then bring it here for a full count. And I want to thank all of the candidates who stepped forward and hope they all get on the April ballot. January 6, the nomination papers will be available. And finally, your censuses will be mailed at the end of this month. You'll have this little QR code on your census so you can apply for a vote by mail. Easy peasy. And dog licenses are now available. So if anyone has a dog, the 2005 licenses are available. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Please, come on up.
Hello. My name's Corey Hughes. I'm here with the circus. I apologize in advance. I know this is not exactly my target audience. But at this point, with all the talk about Bridgewater loving their citizens and putting the best step forward for their citizens, unfortunately, my family is getting zero of that. I would like to thank Bob Ruly, Brad McKinnon, and Caitlin Putt, because that's the only movement we've gotten forward. Our main issue is conservation. We have been trying to put on an in-law on my in-law's house for months now and have gotten nowhere. Our first meeting was scheduled for October 23. We found out the day before that the Secretary of Conservation actually gave us the wrong date. The meeting was the 24th, and no one would allow us to revise our paperwork to make the meeting. They just said, "Sorry, you're going to have to come back in November", which ensued we had to reissue all of our paperwork and paying more fees as well. So then November comes, and it should have been approved then. Nobody had any issues. Between October and November, we asked multiple, multiple, multiple times if anything else was needed. If everything looked good, if we could do anything else, we were willing to do anything to get this approved. They said, "No. Everybody looked at it. Looks wonderful. We really shouldn't have any issues." We were like, "Great. Get on the meeting." They would like to see it staked out in person on the grass. So we would have to wait until December for the stakes to be reviewed. So we talked to agent, the conservation agent, again, the day after that meeting. He agreed that it was not necessary, really, to wait. So a conservation agent and another, the vice chair of conservation, showed up at our house that Monday, took a look at the stakes, said, "Looks great. We'll get you into an emergency meeting before Thanksgiving." They scheduled us for another meeting, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. We find out on Tuesday that it's actually canceled, not allowed to have another meeting for some, another reason that we were given. So we were pushed out till December. So then December meeting comes on, and apparently, that's canceled as well, which we don't even find out from conservation directly. So then come to find out, the reason behind the cancellation of the conservation meeting is, which I'm not sure who is aware, but is not related to anything under our circumstances or anything like that. It's strictly people who are on the conservation board deciding not to fulfill their duties as being on the conservation board for very, very ridiculous reasons. So right now, for people just deciding not to fulfill their position, we, as a whole entire family, with more on the way in a couple weeks, are just sitting ducks, not allowed to do anything, for no good reason, really. So we are just trying to be seen as an actual people. We're not a company trying to build a restaurant. We're not trying to do anything crazy. We're strictly trying to put an in-law on so my in-laws can move in there. We can have a house that fits our whole entire family in Bridgewater. And it's just really exhausting to have to deal with this. So I appreciate everybody listening. Hopefully, somebody can help us get to the right place. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Corey. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Ray, Jammy knowledge road. I left the house with a watch on. I don't have it now. I got up, and my glasses are broken. So go easy on me. I wasn't going to come to this meeting, but I noticed that you're changing administrative code on your agenda, on changing the tree warden position from an elective to appointed position, which is, obviously, needs to be done. But let me give you... I want to come back to that. Let me give you a quick update on the Tree Committee. As you know, we're a tree city now. We're applying for a second year in tree city. It should go in this month. We have... And by the way, the fact that we are a tree city is basically due to Nicole Holmes and your highway superintendent, Pat Paul Decosta. We have planted trees around town. We have allocated $6,000 out of our mitigation funds to the senior center for their plantings, which are in effect right now. They have planted them. We had an open forum last year, and we'll have another one this year, which we will not schedule on the night of the council meeting, so you can all come. But we have unfinished business. I just want to make you aware of this. We need another, we need another member on the board, which we have a position for, for an arborist. We do not have an arborist. We don't have anybody close to an arborist on the board. And that's because we, the town code requires a Bridgewater resident. That should be corrected by January, my understanding. That's great. We need a tree mitigation schedule. We have sent in a tree mitigation schedule to, I believe, the past Town Manager, and I'm not sure where that is right now. We, at some point, we need to allocate some funds for a tree survey. That's in the future. My main concern, though, is the fact of the tree ordinance, which we have in effect right now. Past Town Manager asked us to review it. We did. We spent months on it, and we submitted it to his office back in August. I have no idea what's, where it is right now. The fact that you're being asked to change one line in the ordinance is good. But we have a prototype of a completely different ordinance that was submitted that should be looked at and should be discussed by your, by the council and whether you want to approve it or disapprove it. That should come forward. My main point, though, is the tree warden position. The state requires that all towns and cities have tree wardens. We, in effect, have one, but we don't have one. He's a name only, and he doesn't want to stay on it. We need a tree warden. How are we going to get a tree warden? I don't know. But my point is that the Tree Committee needs a tree... The town needs a tree warden, and you need to work to getting one at some point, hopefully, next year in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else like to come up and speak, please?
Hello. My name is Jean Divatista, 260 Lakeside Drive. How's everybody doing tonight? And I'm actually here to talk about the candidates. So I wanted to say, first of all, that I do agree with Kevin and Fred that I think it would have been better to wait till April, because then you are actually electing people that the residents have selected. However, that decision has already been made. I do think we have a lot of great candidates. I appreciate everybody speaking. A lot of people with a lot of great qualifications, from lots of experience to a really great technical background, to people that have a really wonderful attitude. From my standpoint, what I'm most interested in is somebody that really represents the citizens of Bridgewater and is somebody who has a perspective which is very inclusive and very balanced. And what I mean by that is somebody who's going to look at some of the goals of the town to move forward financially, but also look at the other goals of the town. Like, will a particular project strain resources? Will it cause... Is that project appropriate for the infrastructure in our town, such as, you know, what's going to happen to our already strained water resources? What's going to happen to our roads? Is it going to create traffic? Is it going to take away open spaces? Is it going to affect the environment very negatively? I am actually, which probably would surprise a lot of people in this room, I'm actually pretty much pro-development, but I'm not for over-development. And that is one thing that does concern me quite a bit. But what I think is really, really important for all of us in this town is that that person is an inclusive person who's going to listen to the needs of all of the residents in the town, and also somebody who's going to collaborate really well with all of you. And then third, I would say it's really important to have a person who has a balanced perspective and is going to look at all sides of the issue and make a decision which is balanced and takes all of those factors into account. So that's my point of view. I have my own choice, but I'm going to leave it to you to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Somebody else like to come up and speak? Come on up. Don't be shy.
We'll fight over it. Janet Hansen, 665 Pleasant Street. I don't really have anything much prepared, but I am hoping that you definitely do pick Councilor-at-Lodge tonight. It is hard, you know, to just hear him for the first time and then make a, you know, an opinion. But I disagree with Councilor Chase and Dr. Perry. President Perry, if you have five... You keep saying we have five already, Councilor-at-Lodge is. But we have it so that we have six. So if five is okay, then why do we bother having six? But we do need an odd number. And yes, it's only for four months, but a lot, as Council McGrath has said, and I was writing down before she said it, a lot can happen in those four months. So you do, you know, you're not just going to be sitting on, you know, sitting here. You're going to be voting on things. So we do need that six-person. So hopefully, you will be making the decision and not saying, "Let's forget it." And I wasn't quite sure what Town Clerk was saying about voting. I might have misheard, but I hope it's not that we have to vote, do mail vote. We can do in-person. I feel strongly about in-person. My husband does, too. It gives you a sense of community and involvement. I think people have... I know a lot of reasons why people mail, but sometimes I think people have become... And I don't mean to insult anybody, but lazy by voting by mail. And I think it... There's pros and cons on it, but I hope it's not that we have to vote by mail. And I don't do those QR codes. I refuse to do them. So there's risk involved with that. So I just, I don't know. I have my pick, but I don't want to say. But I do, like the previous speaker said, we do need somebody that will listen to everybody and rounded. I am personally concerned about open space and over-development and also changes that could make a change in this town, not necessarily for the better. So I don't want over-development. So hopefully, you can pick somebody that will represent all of us, and this will give us a good idea of what we want come April. You know, that's, this is, they're going to be their, you know, resume by being here. So I think that's it. I just, hopefully, we're not going to do just mail. Oh, and I prefer, if you're going to cut it down, cut it down to 10 to 8, because there are people that work, and 10 to 3 will be difficult for some people. So if you're going to do... So, if you're going to do it, do it 10 to 8, or not 10 to 3. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hansen. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
John Donah, 261 South Street. Thank you, Mr. President and council members. I just want to say that I appreciate being able to hear all of the candidates speak tonight. It's definitely a formidable group, and they all have very impressive backgrounds. I would like to express my support for Scott Pitta. A few things Scott said that I'd like to bring up. One, he does have experience on the board in the past. And sitting on, sitting in, I don't have a lot of experience coming to the meetings, but I have been coming to some regularly now and plan to continue to do so. But sitting on this side of the room, you know, I do find the charter somewhat confusing for some, maybe difficult to understand. And when Scott says that it would be a priority of his to really look into the charter and maybe pull out things that don't need to be there, or it might make things run smoother in the town government, I think that would be a very important thing to consider. I also, I also trust Scott to be an independent-minded person who would really take a hard look at the issues, not the others wouldn't. But I certainly trust Scott to do that. And I'd be confident as a resident to have him dealing with some of the issues that are coming, you know, before the town, because there are some problems in town, right? We have the water issue. We have the state mandated MBTA law that really concerns me. We've already got overcrowded schools. I know that. I still have a child at BR, and the classrooms are huge. And it doesn't look like it's going to be any better from the state mandated law. And I think we really need to take a hard look at that. Scott would do that. And the last thing is, I think Scott is very fiscally responsible. I believe him when he said that when he came in, the town was in debt, and there was a surplus when he left. And of course, it wasn't just him. It was certainly a group effort by the board and the town in general. But I would like, again, to express my support for Scott. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Donah. Somebody else like to come up and speak? Dr. Hunt.
Good evening. Carlton Hunt, Austin Street. Thank you for adjusting the agenda tonight. I think it's really critical, and you showed a lot of leadership doing that, so thank you. I wanted to comment on Order FY25033, order of placement of flagpoles. I think it's a really well-written, long overdue order. But I also would like to see some changes. I recently visited a town that had three flagpoles up: United States, Massachusetts, local. And I think that needs to be considered for what we're doing out front. I think there's plenty of room for that. So, that's my comment on that. I look forward to commenting further on that. With respect to the FY25034, right of first refusal, I think I understand what's going on. I have one concern. Access to Jenny Leonard Park, there's a parking lot there, and there's a trail that's been cut. I don't know how, if you don't do, if you do the refusal, I don't know what happens next in terms of the town's citizens' access to that park, which is being considered for some improvements. There's nothing before the CPC, which I'm vice chair of, but there are some considerations for having more improvements. So, I don't want that access to be affected. Thank you. Third point is a procedural question for tonight. We have great candidates. I know some, some I don't know. You have a hard choice. What happens if there's a tie? What's the procedural if there's a tie? Is there no one elected? Or do you have to do a second round? What's the procedure? You need to decide that, I think, before we actually take the vote. And the third part is, is it an open vote, or is it a secret ballot? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Please come on up.
Good evening. My name is Steve Black, 145 Leggie Street. I'm very impressed with the candidates that have come forward. I'm very grateful that they have come forward. It's really wonderful to see the love and fondness that they have for our town. I've known David Michael for several years now, and I've known him to be very hard-working, honest, he's dedicated. If he gets this position, he'll throw himself into it the way he has many things. And I've just known him to be an asset to his work. He's an asset to his community. He's an asset to Bridgewater, and he would really be a great asset for our town council. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Hi. I missed this before. Mike Sylvia, 480 South Street. Taking off that hat and putting on citizen hat, I've noticed that there are a lot of committees, and also maybe put on the committee hat, a lot of committees that have vacancies. And I know that these are widely watched by people on YouTube and Facebook, and they are interested in the work that we're doing here. And I think that it would be really great to have more citizens involved in committees. So, I know that there are, what, 28 or 29 committees that have vacancies currently, and they need them filled. So, just kind of a general PSA, asking for people who are watching, people who are in the room, if you're interested, please think about joining a committee so you can keep things moving. That's it.
Here, here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Go on once. Go on twice. All right. Thank you for all those that came up to speak. Appreciate that.
Do we need to suspend the rules to go back?
Uh, no. We suspended the rules just to take that out, so we just go back to appointments of where we were.
I ask a point of clarification through you to the town attorney.
Certainly. Question?
So, the question that the citizen brought up.
Yes.
About what happens if there's a tie?
Yes.
What is the answer to that?
So, there can't be a tie, because essentially, the way that Roberts' rules works and the way that your procedure works, yeah, I think it's, I was moving the mic, is there's first, whoever has the floor first, which would be the chair, the chair calls on the first person, the first person then nominates someone, the nomination needs a second. Then, if that person receives a majority, they're elected or appointed. If they don't receive a majority, then the next person makes a motion, and that's the process.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. That being said, oh, hold on a second. Uh, let's see. So, again, we'll go through a nominating process and vote. We'll probably do this certainly as a roll call. We'll take one candidate at a time. I do want to thank all the candidates that came here tonight. Thank you very much for speaking. As was stated earlier, too, with the election coming up, if you do not get appointed, I certainly encourage you to put your name on a ballot and certainly run for the position in April. Question, Mr. McKinnon?
I have a question.
Yep.
So, we're not going to discuss what we just heard at all either? Because we didn't really have any discussion for that.
Well, we're going to, certainly, we can take a nomination, and then the nomination will be seconded, and then it's open for discussion, just like any appointment, so we can discuss it at that point in time.
Ask a motion?
Yes, Brett.
I'm sorry. Mr. Murphy?
Just a clarification question. If somebody makes a nomination, and we vote on that person, and they're approved, we don't hear from anybody else. So, it's whoever gets that nomination first.
It's why the chairperson gets the good task of whoever has the floor first. The chair could actually take the floor and make a nomination. Your procedure is typically for the chair to speak first, but the chair could take a nomination from anyone. There's a first on the nomination, and then there has to be a second, and then it's a majority vote. That's the process.
You have a question?
I was going to make a nomination.
Well, I'm going to start off with, I actually would like to start the nominations by just the order of things as received. So, I will first start by asking, I'll make a nomination for Scott Pitta for the seat and ask for a second on Scott.
I'll second it.
Second, for discussion. Ms. McGrath, do you have any comments on Mr. Pitta?
Yeah, I think it's helpful where we already have new councils to have someone who's, has experience, he's wrote in the charter, he supports the veterans, he knows the law. I think we all could learn a lot from him.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. McKinnon?
So, I just want to say that I do think we have a bunch of great people up here, and the experience is definitely good. I mean, one of them's talking about already how he wants to run. One who's not here has already ran before, and the other two are great in the community. I mean, I know we can't change procedures or anything, but I think this is where we should use a rank-based voting system, but obviously, it's probably too late for that. But, I mean, I personally want to vote yes on every single one of them, but you can, in a sense, and...
Just to get clarification, we need five votes to appoint.
Yeah, you need a majority, so...
Majority, no.
Yeah, so your rank-based is based on who your primary is. You're essentially voting no on every other one. That's how you do, quote-unquote, "rank-based." But this, unfortunately, you guys don't have this built into the charter, and there's also not an ordinance on what this procedure looks like. So, the procedure you're following is verbatim Roberts' rules. This is the procedure you follow. Yep.
So, my suggestion will certainly be, as we go through, if we can't reach a decision on any of the candidates, then we'll probably go back to at least the top two vote-getters and then go bring those back up, probably, for nominations if we can't reach an agreement by the end of the list. But I think that would probably be the procedure that I would go for.
I was just saying, like I said, I'd say yes to just about all of them, but like I was saying, 1-2-4 kind of thing, but no big deal. I'm all set.
Just for clarification, because we approved the order, does that mean we have to fill the seat with one of these five?
Well, you don't have to fill it with one of the five, but you have to fill the seat. So, your order didn't say appointment of one of the five that are on today, but what your order did say is it said it's committing you to filling this seat, whereas you had the flexibility to either say, "We don't think we want to fill the seat," or "We're going to fill the seat." So, now you're at the point of, you have an order in place that you've already voted that says, "We're going to fill the seat." So, you don't necessarily have to fill it with the candidates that you have before you, but you're making, you know, assumptions that other people will apply. But, yeah, that's essentially where we're at.
I just have a comment. I'll just say, I think this process is a disaster and embarrassment right now. So, just like our town manager searched, the same thing happened there. We didn't have a clear process. Took us two months to create a clear process, and then we finally got going with that. So, I will, once again, propose that I'm going to vote no for all these individuals, and it has nothing to do with their experience or who they are, but the fact that this process is not representative, I believe, of the citizens of Bridgewater. And so, again, I will vote no. And if need be, I will, once again, offer to create an ordinance to clarify this process going forward. In fact, I might do that anyways, just to clarify the charter going forward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any other, Mr. Lindy?
I wanted to say that I agree with Paul. It's not a good process, but I think we have to move forward.
Any other council comments? Seeing none. All right. So, for Mr. Pitta, we have a first and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote for appointment.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Strigels?
No.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
You have to have a majority, so it fails.
Okay. So, then, I'll ask for a motion for David Michael for the...
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
And motion and second. Discussion. Ms. Strigels, since you have the second?
I have known David in a professional capacity for a very long time, and I can say he is an utmost professional. And anytime you see him out in the community, he always knows someone. And as a town counselor, that is a very helpful thing, because as a counselor at large, you could interact with anyone at any given time. And I fully support his candidacy for filling this seat.
Mr. Lindy, you also made the motion?
And I would echo what Counselor Strigels said. I've known David for a while as well. I liked what he said specifically about being calm, focusing on details, and having a well-rounded background, dealing with both the real estate folks and the beauty industry. I kind of think that's a little different. I just like his personality and style and his, when he came and spoke about our flag issue, it was very impressive to me.
Okay, very good. Any other councils have any comments? Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing against Michael. It's just that we have a counselor already that's a realtor, and I kind of would like to have a different point of view from a counselor. That's all.
Ms. McGrath?
I didn't think about that, but that is a good point. I do like as many different mindsets in this room as we can have.
And I agree with Ms. McGrath also. Yes. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Chase?
Thanks, Mr. President. I would just like to say that in my familiarity and association with Mr. Michael, I find him to be very thoughtful and very well-informed on the issue of the day. I really feel that he would bring a great deal to the council. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. I think we heard from just about every counselor on this one, so I will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Ms. McGrath?
No.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
And Mr. McKinnon?
No.
That's 4-4 again.
Fails.
All right. Do I have a motion for Ms. Loretty?
Second.
And second by Mr. McKinnon for discussion. Mr. McKinnon?
So, this is the one that really stuck out to me, because he's the one who's bringing up the fact that he actually wants to run in April. I know many of them might want to, but no one has brought it up. He has worked for municipalities. We do have a lot of infrastructure problems in this town. He has been an engineer with past experience in that, so he was my favorite, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Anybody else, who else made the motion?
I will.
Ms. Strigels, did you have a comment?
I would just say that Mr. Loretty was, in my opinion, very impressive, that he came to our last meeting, introduced himself, and stayed after to speak with counselors, just so that we had the ability to get to know him, and so that he could get to know other citizens. It's really difficult sitting in the gallery for two-plus hours, and he did it with ease, and asked really pertinent questions after the fact to make sure that he was getting into something that he was fully prepared for. And I do think that that speaks volumes to me personally. He has also reached out to multiple counselors, and I do feel that that has built a solid rapport.
Thank you, Ms. Strigels. Ms. Ellenberg, you have a comment?
I would agree with Ms. Strigels and Mr. McKinnon.
Okay. Any other, Ms. McGrath?
Yes, he's one of my, one of my choices, because he brought up education for the school, and he's very well-rounded in different areas that I think would be important for our committee.
Okay. Any other councils have any comments?
That was just, that's what I was going to repeat, too, before she beat me, is he brought up the schools, too. I didn't hear that much. And as we all know, that's an issue right now for our town.
Okay, very good. Any other council comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Five, that's five votes?
So, that's the appointment. So, that's the appointment.
Ms. Loretty, you are appointed to the council. I'll actually go back to the rest of the council again to seeing that the appointment was five votes, if any of the councils want to change their vote to affirmative one to make this council unanimous on the vote of these appointments. Okay, so for those who voted no, do you want to change your vote?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to do as well. Yes, please.
And Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Okay, so now that vote is unanimous. And again, congratulations, Mr. Loretty. We look forward to working with you and I think you probably will need to see the town clerk.
She can do it now.
Let's bring her right up to the podium. We'll make it official.
Is this working?
No, that does work.
That'll be one of these working here.
Yeah, the light doesn't come on.
All righty, raise your strong arm and repeat after me. I, Johnny Loretty.
I, Johnny Loretty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will serve the people of the town of Bridgewater.
I will serve the people of the town of Bridgewater.
To the best my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Creating and upholding the town code.
Creating and upholding the town code.
Ordinances, orders, and resolutions of the town.
Ordinance, orders, and resolutions of the town.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
I further vow to faithfully represent the citizens of Bridgewater.
I further vow to faithfully represent the citizens of Bridgewater.
Regardless of color, gender, or religion.
Regardless of color, gender, or religion.
Honoring their faith and trust in me.
Honoring their faith and trust in me.
I will make myself available to hear.
I will make myself available to hear.
And when possible and appropriate.
And when possible and appropriate.
To act upon concerns presented to me.
To act upon concerns presented to me.
I will serve the town council with diligence.
I will serve the town council with diligence.
Faithfully attending both council and committee meetings.
Faithfully attending both council and committee meetings.
And my term ends April 26th of 2025.
And my term ends April 26th, 2025.
And this is my sacred oath.
This is my sacred oath.
Given today.
Given today.
To the people of Bridgewater.
To the people of Bridgewater.
And sign your name right here.
Question, Mr. Rollins, as far as.
No, he can't be seated tonight.
No, he's not prepared for the meeting, so that's what I assume. So, he will sit at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. I just want a clarification on that. Thank you very much. And again, congratulations, Mr. Loretty. We all look forward to working with you. All right, so now, sorry for the delay on the hearings aspect, but next up, we do have hearings. Petition P. 2025-014, petition for Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid in Verizon, New England, poll request for 1185 Pleasant Street. I will note the time is now, what time is it now? 8:33. And I will open this public hearing. Do I have a representative from National Grid here to speak? Thank you for your patience, sir, and please come up and let us know what's going on here.
So, this is pole installation and pole relocation to get out of the entrance for 185 Pleasant Street, a new customer that's going in there, I believe it's the fire station.
It's a fire station.
It's 1185 Pleasant Street. Yeah, isn't that, yeah, 1185, is that incorrect? Did I? Oh, I apologize, 1185. We're moving one pole, one pole to the left of the entrance and then splitting the distance and adding another pole to support the span and to add a primary riser in order to bring primary down to fire station for their transformer.
Very good, thank you so much. Let's see, any general questions from the public regarding this project for the fire station?
Mr. President, I'll just add that this is at the request of the town to move that pole.
Yes, for sure. Thank you so much. Any general question from the public regarding the project here? Seeing none, anybody from the public speaking in favor? Anybody speaking in opposition? And seeing, any questions from town council on this project? Again, this is for a pole to connect power to the fire station, just relocation of a power pole.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I thought I saw someone in the back raise their hand.
That was, I think they're just saying they were in some way. Thank you. All right, any further questions from the council? Thank you very much. I will close the public hearing at this time, 8:34. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second by Mr. McKinnon. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this petition, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved, thank you very much. I appreciate your patience.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. Next up, we have proposed general ordinance DFY 25-007, acceptance of MGL Chapter 33, Section 59, military service on salaries, seniority, and leave allowances for public employees. I will open up this public hearing at 8:35. Again, this was introduced by myself. This just basically got the town caught up with Master of Law on their policy regarding military service on salary, seniority, and leave. Is there any one from the, general questions from the public regarding this matter? Seeing none. Anyone speaking in favor? Please, Mr. Pitta.
Hello again. I just would like to, one, thank you for bringing this up. In my position at the Office of the Veteran Advocate, I can tell you by bringing this up now, Bridgewater is well ahead of the curve for most municipalities. This is incredibly important. It provides salary protection for your reserve component members that are employees of the town when they do get deployed. If they get deployed and they are lower ranking in the military, what can happen is they're making significantly less money when they get called to active service than what they are making in their civilian position. A lot of private corporations provide this level of protection as well and really what you're doing is you're ensuring that that service member, when they're called to active duty, when they're called to serve, whether it's for the state for an emergency, to deal with blizzards, natural disasters, or to go to combat, that their mortgage can still be paid, their rent can still be paid, that their family can still afford food. So, those are additional stressors that these service members certainly do not need and can be fatal in a combat environment. So, thank you for bringing this forward and I urge you all to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pitta. Any other public speaking in favor? Seeing none, anybody speaking in opposition? Seeing none. Any questions from any town councils? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:38. And I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Mr. McKinnon, second by Mr. Chase. Any further discussion on the proposal, the ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Let's see again. Okay. I have a request for a short two-minute recess because we have been at this for a little while, so I will ask for a motion to recess. Second, second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are in adjournment for two minutes. So, picking up where we left off, we are at G. Licensed Transactions. We have a number of ones to review here for the new year. So, starting off with petition P. 2025-007, the annual licensing of common carrier taxi service business. I will refer to, actually, it's not just by anyone, about, I believe this is just for Bill's Taxi. Any additional information from the town manager? Okay, so this is just basically for Bill's Taxi. They still are a livery service, so they do require this licensing. Motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved, and second by Mr. Chase. Any further discussion on these licenses, on this license? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have petition P. 2025-008, the annual licensing of secondhand gold and pawn shops. We have two, Platinum Scrap and Recycling and Chateau Enterprise, DBA Chateau Jewelers. Again, existing businesses that already had these licenses. Anything further from the town manager? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Some, second.
Moved, second by Mr. McKinnon. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, petition P. 2025-009, annual licensing of automatic amusements in establishments without alcohol. The only applicant at this point is Bridgewater Sports Complex. Again, they have six total amusements and it's a pre-existing license, it's just a renewal. Any motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Strigels. Any further questions on this petition? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved, thank you. Next up, we have petition P. 2025-010, the annual licensing of lodging houses. Again, the town has six applicants, we've had six existing lodging houses. You see them listed in the petition. Just asked through the town manager, we haven't had any issues or complaints regarding any of these lodging houses. Okay, thank you. So, do I hear a motion to reapprove these licenses for these lodging houses?
So moved.
Second, and second by Ms. Strigels. Any further discussion on this petition? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have petition P. 2025-011, the annual licensing of common victor establishments non-alcohol. We have a list of 40, again, all pre-existing businesses, these are all up for renewals. Do we hear a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Chase, second by Mr. McKinnon. Any questions by the council?
Any, any issues with any?
I will refer to the town manager, any issues with any of these businesses? Thank you so much. Any other questions from any council? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of this petition, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, petition P. 2025-012, the annual licensing of Class 1, 2, and 3 auto dealers. And, let's get to that page. We have two Class 1s, 13 Class 2s, and six Class 3s and they're all existing businesses that have already had those licenses to the town manager. Any issues with any of these businesses? Thank you. So, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And second by Ms. Strigl, second by Ms. Ellenberg. Any further discussion on the petitions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, thank you. Motion carries. And finally, petition P. 2025-013, the annual licensing of establishments with alcohol and attendance licenses. And here we have, as you can see, 14 all-alcoholic restaurants, six all-alcoholic clubs, two wine-and-malt restaurants, seven all-alcoholic retail package stores, six wine-and-malt beverage package stores, one Farmer's Series pouring permit, and one general on-premises license. Again, these are all renewals. Again, to the town manager, any issues with any of these licenses? Thank you, there were none. Do I have a motion to approve this petition? First by Mr. McKinnon, second by Mr. Lindy. Any further discussion on the petition? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. That covers licensed transactions. We move now to presentations and we have a vision-to-reality update with our own Mr. Bob Ruley. Mr. Ruley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. You've asked periodically to get updates on vision of reality. I just want to go back to the Vision of Reality initiative is really the implementation of those goals, objectives, and priorities that were outlined in the 2022 Comprehensive Master Plan that the town council adopted. These are all of the elements that we touch as part of this initiative. Many of the concerns that people mentioned tonight are things that we are addressing as part of it. You know, for some, it might seem like we haven't been doing anything for the last two years, but the fact of the matter is we've accomplished quite a bit. So, early on, when we started this initiative, we identified six underutilized parcels that we saw as having the ability to be revitalized, Campus Plaza, the Perkins Foundry site, the former Friendly's assemblage, the technical recycling property on Hale Street, and then 106 Hale Street, which is on the corner of Plymouth and Hale. The Perkins Foundry site has received approval from both the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. It is in the final stages of their MEPA environmental review. Even though this came before the adoption of the zoning amendment for the CDBR and the Form-Based Code, we worked with the developers for them to redesign the project to be consistent with the design guidelines within that zoning amendment. This will include 150 residential units in total. 10% of those at the developer's own initiative are going to be deed-restricted affordable. There is 22,000 square feet of commercial space and we are also able to negotiate $200,000 in unrestricted mitigation funds as part of the approval. And this is a rendering of what the rear building would look like. 60-88 Broad Street is the former Friendly's assemblage that just makes everyone so happy when they drive by and look at it in its current condition. There's actually a total of four parcels there. It was recently purchased this spring by Churchill James LLC. All of the sites are currently vacant and underutilized. The acreage is 2.3 acres. It is in the Central Business District, CDBR. It has access to sewer and water. The proposed plan is to construct eight townhomes for sale, 5,736 square feet of commercial space. Some of that would be a restaurant in the former bowling alley, some of that would be in the mixed-use building, which would also have 66 apartments, 44 of which are one-bedroom, 22 of which are two-bedrooms. I will say that this is the first project that we are seeing under the Form-Based Code, which was recently filed. So, we're going through the completeness of the application. There is a zoning board hearing on this on January 8th and we'll be shortly getting it to the Planning Board for their 30-day review. And again, just architectural renderings of what the mixed-use building could look like, which would be adjacent to the vacant bowling alley and an idea of what the townhomes would look like. 106 Hale Street, as I mentioned earlier, this is owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on behalf of Bridgewater State University to fulfill the governor's initiative in terms of building more housing on state-owned land. DCAM is going to be putting out an RFP, RFQ, for private developers to develop the site in the first quarter of 2025. This will be subject to the Form-Based Code, they're aware of that, so the ground floor will have commercial retail space. And this is 1.5 acres. So, six, out of the six sites we had identified, three of those sites are currently, have some activity on them, which is a good thing. I think that's probably as much as we can handle right now in terms of going through the approval process. The next thing I want to talk about is the second community meeting for Pathways to Progress, which is the Central Square Road and pedestrian improvements. That second meeting is scheduled for January 16th, 2025, at 6:30 PM at the Mookley Center at BSU, the same location we had the first meeting. I want to talk a little bit about the three concepts that the professional design teams and engineers are proposing. I don't want to get into the details of those. I did have an opportunity to share this with the Downtown Revitalization Committee a week or so ago. They asked that we at least socialize what the concepts are, but again, I think any further discussion or debate about the concepts is better dealt with on the 16th. One comment I do want to make, and because there's a lot of rumor and innuendo out there, this plan does not take anything away from the existing town common. We are not taking any land, in fact, under certain alternatives, it could add some additional public space. So, these are just some of the comments that were heard at that first meeting. I think, again, the common thread is that traffic is an issue, it's not pedestrian-friendly and it doesn't feel safe. So, the three design concepts that they've landed on is, alternative one, are the existing So the three design concepts that they've landed on is, alternative one, are the existing conditions, do nothing. The second alternative is to improve signalization. It also would have two-way traffic on both sides of the common with parallel parking. And then the third alternative is to construct a roundabout, which is smaller than a rotary. And again, having two-way traffic on both sides of the common with parallel parking on both sides. So again, this is just a conceptual rendering of what it looks like now. Little confusing, I mean, we always make the point is there's like thirteen crosswalks there. The second alternative, signalization, each of these has strengths and minuses. We're only looking at that easterly end of Central Square. We're not doing anything at this end. The benefits are that some of the crossing lengths would be reduced. There'd be greater visibility, increasing the sidewalk space. For bicyclists, it would allow there to be family-friendly bikeways from Summer Street to Town Hall. And then open space, it would extend to the north, increase connectivity to Town Hall, the Town Hall Green. The drawbacks, it could increase vehicular traffic queues at Broad and Main. Access sidewalk expansion along Summer Street and Main Street is limited, but they do need to be improved, and that's our, our, our goal as part of this. Then there would be no bike connections along Summer and Main Street. And this is just a rendering of what that could look like with two-way traffic and parallel parking. Now, alternative three is the roundabout at Main and Broad. This would have four-way stops at this end. Central Square, again, would be dual two-way traffic, and School Street would be also opened to two-way traffic. As you know, it's two-way traffic to a point now, and then it becomes one-way. Benefits, it reduces delay at intersections. It allows for slow and steady travel through the square. For pedestrians, it reduces crossing length, creates greater visibility, increased delay, increased sidewalk space. For bicyclists, it's family-friendly, it allows for bikeways throughout. And then for open space, again, it allows us to extend to the north, increase connectivity to Town Hall Green, and increase space for vegetation. Drawbacks, it would require a, potentially a taking at that southeast corner of the Broad Street, Main Street, and Summer Street intersection. This by far is the most expensive and complex, but the sentiment with the subcommittee is that, in the long term, this might be the best alternative for residents and businesses. And this is just, again, a conceptual drawing of what that would look like. So again, this will be open for public discussion and vetted at the meeting. We're not making any recommendations, just giving you a heads-up of what the alternatives are. So I heard a lot about, we don't want any more development, we don't need any more development. I've talked before about infrastructure. And again, I, I'm, I'm struggling to understand, if we don't have an expansion of the tax base and we don't have smart development, how are we paying for current infrastructure improvements, which are almost a hundred and thirty million dollars before we build anything? So not doing MBTA communities precludes us from getting any financial assistance from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We've tried to be selective in terms of where we have identified development opportunities. We need to expand the tax base to pay for some of these improvements. Now, I, I've said this before, and I'll say it again. Some of these issues are things we should have been dealing with ten, fifteen years ago. I'm not here to point fingers, but we're dealing with them now. Water and sewer projects are not a one-year fix. These could be five-to-ten-year projects, and identifying the funding is going to be difficult. We have had some conversations with the city of Taunton. Those have been hot and cold. We do have other alternatives in terms of wells on Vernon Street that we could access for water. Those are expensive options as well. Any expansion of the water system is going to be expensive. Similarly, we are in conversations with DCAM and the Department of Corrections on redirecting wastewater, so we can take some of the pressure off our existing plant. In my conversations with DCAM regarding the development of one oh six Hale Street, I've made it very clear that you're going to need water and sewer there. I need your help so we can get, you know, water and sewer to other parts of the community. So, I mean, I think we have to be careful when we say we don't want new development, because we don't have the ability to borrow a hundred and thirty million dollars. And again, this is a bill that comes due if we do nothing. This has nothing to do with new development. So I've talked before that if we look at the projects that we have and we're able to do district improvement funding, it's an opportunity for us to generate some of the funding that we're going to need to pay for some of these infrastructure improvements in addition to whatever state and federal money that we are able to get. I am not overly confident for the next four years that there's going to be a lot of federal infrastructure money coming to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But that's okay, because we can be in the planning stage in identifying some of these options that were available to us during that time period. Now, we're also working with Old County Planning Council. They have initiated, similar to what they did for Route eighteen, they've initiated a Route one oh four corridor study. That will be supportive of what we're doing in some of the decisions that are made for the Central Square improvements. They've been doing traffic counts the last two months. They have a citizen survey out there now, and we'll be doing some more workshops with them as we go forward into the first quarter of 2025. So that's an update as to where we are. We've actually made significant progress. But I'm happy to answer any questions or listen to any comments that any of you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Ruley. Any questions from any council members, Ms. Ruley? Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ruley, I have one question. So the four parcels on sixty through eighty-eight Broad Street, the total is two point three acres?
That's correct.
So if we're giving them twenty-six, with the bone density, twenty-six for each acre, how do they get sixty-six apartments and eight townhomes?
That's coming in under the Form-Based Code. This is not the same as what the CDVS is. So they, this is, they need a variance for the size of the building, but this is the number of units that they can get in under the Form-Based Code.
But I thought the highest stake?
Density bonuses are in the CDVS.
Is it not everywhere? No?
This is in the CDBR.
So over here, you can give as many as you want?
No, I mean, they still have to be able to park it and meet other requirements, but it's not, the density bonus you're referring to is in the CBS, which is not in the down, I mean, it's part of downtown, but it's more down on the Main Street area.
So in these areas, more than twenty-six can go in an acre?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to add, President Perry, with respect to the Central Square pedestrian improvements, we're able to do that first piece that we're working on now with ARPA funding that we had gotten. I was able to also get, in the governor's economic development bill that she signed a few weeks ago, another hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do Phase Two, which will get us to, you know, towards final design as we move forward.
Very good, thank you. Any other councils with questions for Mr. Ruley? All right, very good, Mr. Ruley, thank you for the update. And obviously, the more of that, the various designs will be vetted at that meeting in January, so certainly encourage the public to attend that. All right, next up, we have Town Manager's Report. And with that, I'll ask for a fire station update. Again, it's, Mr. Ruley will be updating us on what's happening with the fire station.
So I did include a short memo in your package. The total budget is still almost twenty-six million dollars. We are still ahead of schedule. We were two and a half months behind schedule when I got involved in April. The weather has been our friend. We were fortunate that we were able to buy out a lot of the steel and other materials in advance of any potential tariffs that could impact the project. I think we're at about eighty-four percent of the remaining contingency. I don't want to say what the contingency is in case our general contractor is listening in. But that's something that, you know, we're very vigilant about monitoring on a weekly basis. We have weekly meetings on Wednesdays with the general contractor, the construction manager, the architect. And we also have a separate set of meetings on Monday with just the architect and the construction manager, not the contractor. So both Laurie Greene, from the Finance Department, and myself are at those meetings. We are making sure that this stays on schedule or ahead of schedule and definitely under budget.
Very good, Mr. Ruley. Any questions from any councils?
And I provided a three-week look ahead. That's something that we talk about at our Wednesday meetings.
Fantastic, thank you. Any questions from any councils?
As a critic to this project constantly, I appreciate the three-week lookout. I think it's helpful, but I would advise you to look at the dates, because they're not accurate on there. So with the minimal effort that gets put in as I critique the monthly project memo we get, now that duration, start and finish, that doesn't line up in a few of these on here. So just feedback-wise, it seems to be a repetitive thing from their documentation, but.
Yeah, I mean, and honestly, we've had some critique of how these documents are being prepared, but I'll certainly raise that tomorrow morning in our meeting.
Anything else, Mr. Murphy?
No.
Just as an aside, again, obviously, with the winter months, any idea when walls might be up so there'd be a sound building for the, for the winter?
Right now, they're doing the decking and finishing and the steelwork. So once that's completed, then I think you'll start to see them closing the building in.
Yep.
You know, that's something they're motivated to do, obviously, because the more that they get it closed in, the more work they can do through the winter season, but.
Right, sure. We'll just keep an eye on it, there you go.
I mean, there's still, we're still anticipating that in the third quarter of 2025, the building will be substantially completed.
Great. All right, very good. Then I believe the town manager had some information on municipal aggregation.
Yes, I have that and one other small item to add after that.
Certainly.
So right after your last meeting, the State Department of Public Utilities finally approved the town's municipal aggregation plan that you, you put forth and asked for approval on earlier in 2024. The next step is for us, us being myself, staff, and the Energy Committee to work together with the consultant that the town hired, Colonial Power, shortly after the New Year starts, to figure out what options we want to be able to offer to all Bridgewater electricity users, residents and businesses, to go out to bid and find, try to lock in a lower price for the basic service rate that people pay for now for their service provider of electricity, as well as one, possibly two, other greener options for people who would like to be able to support power that comes from wind, solar, and other types of renewables. So we're going to be gathering the data, looking at those options, going out to bid on those so that we can try to put in place a program probably by around May, May or June. Colonial Power will be doing the, the work of handling all of the public outreach, which is important to make people aware of it in various forms, answering questions and helping people understand what their options are. So just want to let you know that we're off and running finally on that project. And then very quickly, there was a question asked at the second meeting in November about when meetings are, from various committees, are put up on YouTube so people could watch them again. I have asked our IT people to remind all council committee clerks, as soon as they get a Zoom link from a meeting they've recorded, please let IT know, because it's on their docket every day to get those requests and put those meetings up. And I've urged people to call our office if they don't see a meeting in a couple of days so we can make sure we get on it.
Thank you very much. Any questions from any councils or the town manager? Ms. Strigles?
Thank you, thank you, Town Manager Robinson. I just want to go back to one of my constituents, Corey Hughes. I think all of us feel that no one should get to this place with a town committee or a lack of a decision. So based on things that she had said about how that board is currently structured, can we please find out what's happening there? Because it doesn't really sound like this application should be held up any further, or if at all. So I would like to get her some answers on that, especially before the holiday.
Of course.
Thank you, Ms. Strigles, I agree with you on that. Any other councils, Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President, to you too, Mrs. Robinson. Before Mr. Dutton left, he asked Don, his senior executive assistant, to look into whether we can convert the Town Hall EV charging to a paid system. Do you know if they've looked into that and talked to Lay's Parking about it?
Is this the EV charger at Town Hall?
Yeah.
I don't think we've acted on that, but I'll check.
All right, thank you.
Any other council questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, I have had a discussion with our town manager about the old Town Hall, and I would ask that you just give everyone a very brief summary of what's happening.
I'd be happy to do that at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll do that next meeting, for sure.
Thank you.
I was just, to add on to a citizen's comment earlier, if we could hear a little background information on the tree warden that we currently have for the town of Bridgewater and what that person does time-wise, commitment-wise, and then schedule the tree mitigation schedule update?
Sure.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else, any requests for the town manager? Seeing none, we're moving on. No discussion items for this evening, committee reports. Anyone have a committee report they'd like to share?
Murphy, update on the town manager?
Quick update, we'll be meeting this Thursday evening at seven-thirty PM, where we will discuss the results of the survey, which had a tremendous response. According to Community Paradigm, we were one of the top towns that they've worked with, and they've worked with, I think it's well over a hundred and fifty towns. So response-wise was great. Some of that feedback will be discussed and presented on Thursday as well, too. So anybody that's interested to see what those results were would suggest that you tune in on Thursday. And we will also go over the position description and what that'll look like before it's made public and posted online as well, too. So welcome anybody's input along the way. I've been trying to respond to emails and meet with folks as they come in, so we invite that to continue. And then anybody that wishes to be a part on Thursday, welcome there as well, too. It's a Zoom meeting, yes, yep. And it's posted online already on the town website.
Ms. Lenny?
Just wanted to clarify something for the record that I discussed with the Council Murphy right before the meeting. It's my understanding now that the only citizen input is the survey. Is that correct?
No, I would say that's not correct. I would say that I held two forums this past summer for citizen input, which were pretty well-attended, and you were there, too. So that information I've shared with Community Paradigm from the notes I took at those forums. I'd also say that we have an email address set up, that I know a few folks have emailed Community Paradigm directly as well, too, with some of their thoughts and feedback. So they've received that, and then the survey would be the third point. And the fourth point, I would say, is for any citizen that wishes to attend the meetings that would take place for the Town Manager's search, there's an open public comment there as well, too. So I would say there's actually five avenues for the public to be involved in this process currently.
I, again, would like to go on record, we have two meetings a year that we can designate for public meetings. And my suggestion a while ago was to use one of those two meetings to actually do this. So citizens were not limited to three minutes apiece, standing up there during the citizen comment period. And I would still like to see that happen. I was told by Mr. Lynch, when I spoke to him one-on-one, that there would still be meetings, and then come to find out that there aren't.
We can have further discussions with them and see what can be done. But, okay. Any other committee meeting reports? Seeing none, okay, moving on. We already did legislation for action. We do not have any old business. We will move on to end new business. First up is Proposed Ordinance D F Y twenty-five dash zero one two, Proposed Amendment to Part Two Administrative Code, Chapter sixty, Article one, Section one, Regarding Elections. And let me get to that. This is, this is what was brought forward by the, the town clerk, as mentioned earlier, sponsored by myself. Again, as she described, this would only be based on the town election, and depending on whether there's contestant races or not, would minimize the hours to save money, but also to expand the mail-in ballots. So again, this is.
Mr. President?
To, yes, hold on a second. Looking to refer this to rules and procedures for review. So I'll ask for a motion to send, and then second for discussion, then we can have some discussion. Ms. Strigles, second by Mr. McKinnon, Ms. Ellenberg had a question?
I guess, actually, I would like to, at this point, make an amendment that it, that it read, remain open no later than eight o'clock in the evening, as was suggested by. read, remain open no later than 8:00 in the evening, as was suggested by Mrs. Hanson. Is, would anyone second that motion?
I just want to say, point of information, so the only reason why it would get knocked down to three is if it was uncontested.
Oh, well, yes. Then, then we need to determine 3:00 PM for uncontested, and any special town elections which could involve important questions like overrides really should have a longer period of time.
Right, I understand. But, again, this is not addressing that. Many times, those are more expanded elections anyway. This is just for specifically small-town elections, whether it be a council or something along those lines. That's just addressing, again, if it's an uncontested race, they would cut the time back, but if there are contested races, it still remains open until 8:00 that evening.
May I withdraw my motion and make a separate motion that we just table this for now until we clarify what we want to do? And rather than trying to make amendments on the fly, let's do this the right way.
Well, again, we're sending this to Rules and Procedures to be reviewed. What would be a logical first step to.
And they will make amendments?
Then it comes back to us for further discussion.
Thank you.
All right. So.
Well, there's a pending motion to table.
All right. Is there a second on that motion to table? Seeing none, so we will move forward away from that motion. Mr. Lindy?
So, I just want to go on record stating that I understand what was presented to us earlier by the town clerk. People have different schedules. We don't have people that work the same time or vote the same time. Just because another town does it doesn't mean it's right for us. I do not want to see it reduced. The sum of $2,300 to me is not a lot of money, and I would like to see the hours stay the same. I'm going to talk, I'm going to appear at, you know, Rules and Procedures and state that case. But, you know, if it was, if it was like $10,000, maybe I would think about it. But, I really do think people vote in the morning, and just because they can vote by a mail-in ballot, that's all well and good. Some people don't prefer to do that. I, if we had early voting, I don't know, I don't believe we have early voting for town elections. If there was, that was an option, I'd like to see that happen, but I, I'm not in favor of this.
All right, Dan. Well, again, just looking to send this to Rules and Procedures to be vetted out for, for the, for the council's sake. Any further discussion? Seeing none. I had a motion second to send to Rules and Procedures. All those in favor of sending to Rules and Procedures signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll vet this out to do the subcommittee. All right, next, we have Proposed Ordinance DFY25-013, Proposed Amendment to Part II Admin Code, Chapter 290, Article 1, Section 1, Regarding Shade Trees. Again, this is sponsored by myself, and this basically just was updates to that particular chapter in our admin code that was put together by the town manager before he left. Again, look for a motion to send to Rules and Procedures, and a second for discussion.
Second.
Second, and second by Mr. McKinnon. Any discussion on the matter?
Just a question. Why was it chosen to change it to appointed? Could someone answer that? It's an appointed position, is that correct? Am I reading it right?
The, in regards to, yeah, well.
Tree warden?
Change, it's, is originally written as elected. We are looking to change to appointed.
Yes, I'm just asking why, if someone could answer.
It's going to be easier to potentially put a person in place via an appointed situation, and I believe we're looking to take out the, the fact that it's a town person. I don't believe we're limiting it to just someone in Bridgewater. So, that way there, we could appoint as opposed to being elected person from Bridgewater.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor sending to Rules and Procedures, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Order OFY25-033, An Order For The Placement Of Flag Poles. This was sponsored by Councillors Chase and McGrath, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Chase for introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And as I needn't inform the council, we've spent a great deal of time, pardon me, in recent weeks, speaking about flags, and during the course of all those discussions, one suggestion had been made on a number of occasions, that additional flag pole be added to the Academy Building campus to accommodate the flying of special flags that are requested by citizens pursuant to our flag-raising ordinance. It so happens that both the Veterans Service Officer, Mr. Greg Martin, and I were each contemplating a proposal to add a second flag pole unbeknownst to one another. We managed to get our thoughts together with the help of the town manager, and we are in agreement, as is the Veterans Council, that it's appropriate that a second flag pole be procured for that purpose. And as part of that measure also, that the existing flag pole be moved to the center of the fountain on the campus of the Academy Building, directly across from the 9/11 memorial on the town common. So, there would be two adjacent flag poles, and it would mean that the flag of the town of Bridgewater would be flown on a permanent basis on one. The United States flag and the POW flag would fly on the other flag pole. And whenever the council approves a citizen request pursuant to our flag-raising ordinance to fly another flag, that other flag would be flown beneath the town flag, on the town flag pole. So, that's what this order is about. And I'm personally very grateful to, to Councillor McGrath for her willingness to join in this, in support of this measure. Also, of course, to Mr. Martin, with whom I've had any number of discussions at this point on this matter, and the Veterans Council, who really brought forward the proposal in the first place. So, with all that in mind, I'm hoping the council will favor this order.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Just as co-sponsor, Ms. McGrath, do you have any other comments?
I thank you, Mr. Chase, for reaching out to me. I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Lindy, you have a question?
I think it's wonderful. I just do have a question. Where would we place the Commonwealth of Massachusetts flag?
Well, the question is, you know, and some people have suggested that even a third flag pole be considered.
Yes.
And I've heard proposals to that effect. I'm personally very favorable toward display of the flag of the Commonwealth. However, I'm looking at this from the standpoint of budgetary concerns, and, again, the, the order as written does provide for only the procurement of a second flag pole, which would, which would not provide the opportunity for a display of the Commonwealth flag. Yes?
Any councillors' questions? To add to that, Mr. Chase, and thank you for your work and Ms. McGrath on this. I also am in agreement that this would definitely help fix a lot of problems, but I do, I've spoke with Mr. Martin, too, earlier today about the potential for a three-pole setup. I would just like to vet out through the town manager a potential cost of doing two versus three to see if there is a major difference in cost for it. But I think to display the American flag up front with the state and town flags beside, I think would be a better long-term setup for the town, as long as it's not too financially out of whack to do three as opposed to two. I think aesthetically, it could, it'd look very well. And also, down the line, whether we replace the town flag with a ceremonial flag or hang it below the town flag, I think it at least will allow those hanging those flags to understand the town is behind that flag. But I do think having another flag pole for the state flag to one side, I think, would be appropriate. But that's, again, pending financial feasibility for it.
Mr. President, just quickly on, on this particular one, when it goes out to committee, I would, I would recommend that the committee look at maybe just the verbiage of the order, because the order seems to almost indicate that the manager is responsible for funding and procuring the purchase. I, I think, I think what you're looking for is for the manager to investigate the situation and produce a report essentially to you all that these are the options, because at the end of the day, it's only you that can appropriate funds. So, I, maybe you just in committee, you want to work out just that, fine-tune that language at the end, that orders, the manager really to look into the situation and provide you with options and costs, I think.
My suggestion would be, again, keeping this order certainly at a council level, because we really don't have a subcommittee to really deal with this. We could get the town manager to get those numbers for us, review it as a committee, and we can amend this order appropriately at the end, depending on which direction we wanted to go as far as the flag.
Yeah, because I think what you would really be ordering, because ultimately, it's under the charter, it's kind of up to the town manager on the use of the town property. However, I think what you're ordering is an appropriation of funds for a specific purpose.
Yep.
That then she would follow through on that purpose.
Right. So, if we just kept it at a council level, amended appropriately based on the numbers she gets for us, we should be able to move forward with that.
Yeah, I mean, it, well, it becomes an, I think what you want this order to really be, and you can keep it at council level, but I think what you're, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I just want to make sure I understand it. I think what you want it to be is a directive to the town manager to investigate the situation and then produce options for you all and costs.
Right.
That's what this order should be. Once she produces that, you all could bring forward an appropriation based on that.
Right.
Right? Ultimately, it's the town manager's decision how town property is utilized. However, if you're appropriating funds for a specific purpose and you oversee the town manager, I would expect.
Sure. No, my guess is just, again, if we decide to go with the two, the language could remain the same. If we decide to change to three, we can amend the language and change it to three based on what the town manager.
No, I, that, no, what I'm saying is this language needs to be changed to a directive to the town manager as opposed to, you don't even need to get into the specifics yet. I think what you're actually asking to have done is have the town manager look into all the options and the cost. And then, that will be your order. You can keep that at council level. You can vote on it at the next meeting.
Okay.
I would just amend, just maybe fine-tune that. We can amend it at the next meeting if, if that strikes your fancy. I, but I think that's what your intentions are.
Exactly. I think that's exactly what we're looking to do. Okay.
All right.
So, that being said, Mr. McKinnon?
I do just have one comment. When we do, or whoever looks at this, it probably would be good to look into a sign, too, because we've been talking about signage up front in the town hall, too. I mean, if we're moving flag poles, that means we're going to be moving electrical lights and all that other stuff. And who knows, maybe the sign's going to be an electrical sign in front of the town hall. Like I said, who knows? But I'm just saying, that might be good to look at that while looking at that, too, to see if you can incorporate both of them together to save work down the road. That's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McKinnon. Any other comments or questions? Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question. This order, since it's going to be staying at the town council, this order was used to hold back my ordinance that's in Rules and Procedures. So, could Rules and Procedures vote on mine and move it forward to the town council?
I'll refer that to Mr. Chase, being chair.
At the last Rules and Procedures committee meeting, we, we discussed the proposed ordinance that was brought forward by you, councillor, and by councillor Lindy, and we decided to continue that matter pending the disposition of this order.
Yeah, but it's two separate things, and it's already been in there nine weeks. So, could you just forward it, and we keep these two separate? Because now we're going to be working on different amendments for that. So, I'd appreciate it if it could come on the agenda for January.
Okay. I, I, I'm certainly amenable to that. I'm just expressing that, for example, if the order, as we finally do approve it, provides, as this one does, for the moving of the flag pole, that will be the flag pole that does fly the POW flag.
Right, but mine's an amendment to an ordinance that would always fly there. So, I'd rather keep them separate, if you don't mind.
Okay.
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 I have one more question. Can.
Ms. McGrath.
Mr. Rule, have, Rollins, have you looked at this, this order?
No, I mean, I'm seeing it now.
Because, I'm just concerned, because Mr. Chase brought up the Supreme Court, so I've been looking into it.
Yep.
So, I think if these flags, Juneteenth, our pride flag goes under the Massachusetts state's flag, we might have a problem, because under the town of Bridgewater, it's the town's councils, it's the government's voice. But if these flags fly under the state, then it might become freedom of speech. So, I was wondering if, you know, should we put this on hold and you look, dig into it?
I, I would say no, only in that I think what you're actually proposing today is really more of like a feasibility examination by the town manager of options. Once you determine that, your next step is really only, your only real next step is to appropriate the funds or amend the current ordinance as it's stated, which I guess you already have one pending. As it relates to political speech, that's a little more complicated. However, I don't necessarily think there's a distinction in where something is flown. I think it is the manner in which this board votes as a political entity, which determines if it's political speech, regardless of where that flag is. So, it gets very complicated after. First Amendment issues are always very complex. But my, my thought is, it's a, what you're saying, I understand, but I think as it relates to this order, this order is really, as I understand it, about the town manager just looking into the possibilities and getting prices. That's all this order currently is about.
But you could look at it, I mean, just, so when we come next time, we'll know that if we have three flag poles, we make sure that if one's flying in under the state, we don't know if that's the state's government's opinion, but it flies under our town, the town council, that's the government's speech. I know it gets issues, so I was wondering if you could.
I, I mean, I.
Clarify it a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, I think if anything, the Massachusetts Constitution is even, is even more broad. I, I mean, I think there would probably even be greater protections flying a flag under the Mass flag. I don't think that's a distinction, because I, I think the, the free speech amendment is very strong in, you know, in any context, and political speech coming from a town government is protected speech. So, I, I think where you fly it is is less relevant, honestly.
Okay.
I can look into it. I mean, if you have a case you want me to read that relates to that.
Well, it's the Boston one, because they.
The Shirtleaf case?
No, because they said that, you know, the government's speech.
Yeah, that's a very, so that case, we could go into that case for a very long time.
Right.
But there are very unique distinctions in that case from what we have in this town.
I was just talking about the, the public speech or the government's speech. So, it was.
So, so.
It was only the third thing that the Supreme Court was. That's the only one I was looking at.
Yeah, I don't think the Shirtleaf case was about where you fly the flag. I think the Shirtleaf case is about the mechanism in which a government decides how they speak on behalf of the government. That's really what, in the, in the very highest level, that's, it's very nuanced.
Yeah.
But on the highest level, that's what that case is about.
That's what I was getting confused, because if it was under the state or the.
No, I, I don't think there's a distinction that we have to worry about.
I just wanted to make sure before we start.
No, I don't think so.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Ms. Lindy had a question?
I don't know who to ask this question to, but my understanding is the US flag law provides for the POW MIA flag to fly directly below it, correct?
That is on federal property.
On federal property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Typically.
Okay.
I think that's a federal law.
But I think the, the spirit around here is people want to see it under.
Yes.
I'm not getting into where the flags are going to fly. That's up to you guys to argue about.
All right. So, we're just at, a, a, a motion, a second to keep this at a council level, and we'll bring it up for further discussion.
So, moved.
Yep, first and second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And lastly, Order OFY25-034, Write A First Refusal, Oldfield Estates, NKA, Oldfield Preserve. And this was brought forward by Councillor Chase. So, would you like to introduce this to us, Councillor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. And the, the town does have available a right of first refusal to purchase a portion of this particular subdivision. However, town administration has concluded that there's no compelling interest for the town to exercise that option, and therefore, the town administration is willing to forego its. And therefore, the Town Administration is willing to forego its right of first refusal and waive it pursuant to this order.
Okay, so I'm looking for a referral to Community Economic Development and a second for discussion. Hold on a second. So do you have our motion to send the CEDC and...
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion. I did a primary motion. Who would've made that? Okay, thank you.
Second for discussion.
And a second for discussion. Ms. Allenberg, you had a question?
Mr. Chase, can you tell me where the property is and what it was versus what it's going to be, what its projected use is?
It's, this is a residential subdivision existing, currently built. And pursuant to its original plan, there was a portion of common land there. And the decision that's being made by the trustees of the homeowners' trust is to donate that portion of common land to the Wildland Trust. And in order for them to do it, they need to have the town waive its right of first refusal, which is what this order is intended to do.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other further questions? So again, sending this to CE, Community Economic Development, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, that wraps up our new business and our business for the evening. I will entertain citizens' comments. Once again, if you'd like to come up and speak, due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the Town Manager at a future Town Council meeting. Please state your name and address for the record and keep it to three minutes or less.
Hi, Lorraine Powers, 51 St. Rice Drive. I just want to really thank the councilors, in particular Counselor Chase, Counselor McGrath, and the Town Manager for working together on this initiative. We really appreciate that. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Lorraine. Anybody else? Please.
Janet Hanson, 665 Pleasant Street. Just a few things. As far as the flags, I think to add to it, just get three poles. That's the end of it. You put one thing with the American flag and the POW flag, the other one with the state and the town. And then the third one is for whatever else needs to be done. You don't have any concern. Just remember, the American flag needs to be the highest. It can't be lower than any of the others. And I still have trouble with the website trying to find committee meetings. I just find the website hard to navigate if that can be somehow. Other people find it a little easier, and I'm not naive to computers, but I find it hard to find the meetings. And sometimes the minutes aren't there for some committees. So I think it, somehow it needs to be tweaked again. And as far as that roundabout, I know that's going to be discussed on January 16th. I totally don't want to see that, and I don't want to see buildings taken over because it obviously, land will be needed to develop that. And I wouldn't want my, I don't believe in a town taking property. And I wouldn't, would you want your property taken for something? But at first, I don't even see that it works, so I, I'm just putting my two cents in on that. As far as the election, I still would like to see it stay at eight to eight. If it has to change, do it 10 to eight, but not 10 to three. There are people that work and can't get out at three. And if you do it at 10 and they go, you know, they're at work. So just keep that in mind. It really, just keep it like Mr. Lindy said, $2,300 is not a lot of money in order to change everything, and please don't make it just all mail-in. And as far as the Broad Street Project friendlies, of course, this would be to do with the planning board, but I find 66 apartments in that area way too much, so that's going to have to be discussed. There's going to be traffic and things like that. But fix the website a little bit user-friendly better and get three flag poles. And appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Anybody else? Rick?
Again, one last thing on trees. Now, I understand that all the things that you have for you this evening, trees are not a huge priority. But I just want to say that they are important. And that if you ever want a presentation from the Tree Committee on why trees are important and what we can do, we're willing to do it. Give you one example. I don't know if you realize, there are street trees and there are private trees. Most people don't understand that some of the trees in front of their house are, they're not on their property. We had four trees cut down that were most likely street trees by a private owner. People don't know it. It's one thing that we like to, we would like to do is to try to educate the public that certain trees may not be on their property, that they can't touch them. They have to come to the town, where a tree warden would go out, look at it and see, and decide if the tree is on their property or not. My only point is, there are a lot of things that we can do. And so if you want to be a little more educated about what we can do, we're willing to come for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else? Dr. Hunt? Oh, sure.
Krista Jemian, 221 Aldrich Road. While my favorite candidate did not win the election tonight, it's exciting to see new faces, fresh faces, with hopefully new, exciting ideas to help you all, help the town, and I look forward to the election in April. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
980 Austin Street. First of all, I'd like to appreciate the clarifications that the Town Attorney provided tonight. I think his ability to speak clearly and succinctly is a gift. Second, I don't know how many of you know, but the Historic District Commission oversees the exterior changes in that district. That includes this building, the common, and it goes on down Broad Street a ways and up a little bit on Summer Street. That commission has to issue a cert certificate of appropriateness for any changes in its district. So I think that's word to the wise to start to talk with them a little about some of these changes that you're doing. The other thing I note is regarding trees. I understand that the Highway Department may not have a bucket truck that an arborist could use to trim trees. And that's been a problem for years. Hopefully, it's been solved. But I understand it's been a problem for years. And quite frankly, that would be one of the things that, the money that we have, even if it's a little, could go to a bucket truck. I think they would appreciate that. And my last point is Thursday night, 6:00 p.m., we have a hybrid meeting with this Community Preservation Committee. It's hybrid. Public comments are welcome. For our five-year plan, we're looking at the draft. We hope to have that finalized by February. But this is the final place for public to input and talk about our goals and where we want to go as a town over the next five years for community preservation. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Anybody else like to speak? Going once? Going twice? Thank you very much for those who came up to speak this evening. That brings us to council comments. I will start with Mr. McKinnon. Am I right?
Just a quick one. There's too many holidays to announce at once, so I'm just going to say happy holidays to everyone and let's bring it into 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Ms. Allenberg?
Yes, I'd like to say congratulations to Johnny Loretty. And happy holidays to everyone. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allenberg. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, just a quick thank you to everybody that came up and presented tonight for the open counselor seat. I think you are all great candidates, and I hope and encourage you all to please apply for the April election. It would be great to see all your names on that ballot. And a welcome to our new counselor and happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Ms. Lindy?
Just echoing the comments of my fellow counselors, happy holidays to everybody, wishing good luck to our new counselor, and encouraging everybody that put their name forward to consider the April election as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would certainly like to congratulate Counselor Loretty. And we thank him for his words this afternoon or this evening. What is it now? This evening and... We'd like him to now realize, if he hadn't already, that this may be what many of your Tuesday evenings are going to look like in the future. But congratulations, and I do want to thank all the candidates who came to speak to us tonight. And I expect that many of them will, in fact, seek nomination papers for the April election. I would urge them to do that, and certainly yourself among them, Mr. Loretty. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. Strickles?
Thank you so much. Again, congratulations, Counselor Loretty. And I look forward to working with you for the next few months. And to everyone who came and spoke and applied, please pull papers and let your voices be heard. Let the voters that have now heard where you stand on what you believe the town needs to go as far as a direction. Please, I encourage all of you to pull papers and be on the ballot in April. And I want to personally thank Chief Delmonte. He helped me with a situation. Typically, I wouldn't necessarily call the chief of police at 7:30 at night, but he is my neighbor, so it was very helpful. And I also want to congratulate him because he was just recently installed as the president of the Massachusetts Chief of Police Association. I think that that is just a glowing representation of who we are as a town, that our chief was recognized in such a way. So I wanted to just publicly thank him and congratulate him for that.
Thank you, Ms. Strickles. Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. As Counselor Strickles said on December 12th, President, Police Chief Delmonte was installed as the president. Me and Counselor Lindy was there. It was a great honor, and he has a lot more responsibility as it is. It was a moving ceremony. BSU sponsored the event, which they did very elegantly. And on December 10th, I attended the Bridging Lives meeting at the Bridgewater High School. Bridging Lives is a local substance use prevention correlation serving the towns of Bridgewater and Rainham. I was very impressed at how involved the high school students are in the difference they are making in other students' lives. So I've asked them to come to the Town Council and present a presentation, and they agreed. So hopefully, we'll see them in next year. And Happy New Year to everybody and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Just to wrap it up again, congratulations to Counselor Loretty. We look forward to working with you. And a big thank you to all the candidates that put their names in and stepped up and spoke tonight. And then obviously, we had a great crowd to support various candidates and let their opinions be known. In the end, that's, you know, democracy working at its best. So I, again, as mentioned, encourage all the candidates to pull papers in January, between now and April, and put your names on the ballot to go forward into that election and make a contested race, because I think the town would like to see that. I want to echo the sentiments that Counselor Strickles and McGrath did for Chief Delmonte. A wonderful honor. He got bestowed upon being president of the chiefs of the state. I could not make the event due to work restrictions, so I publicly want to congratulate him for that. Outside of that, I want to wish everyone a very safe and happy holiday season, and we will see you in the new year. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move. Second.
And second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in a German. Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays.